...of what terrorizes some of our neighborhoods.
City leaders say many of their anti-crime strategies are paying off. They're hiring civilians for admin jobs to put more officers on the street. They boosted the number of patrol hours by close to half a million, taken thousands of guns off the street through buyback programs, and created more community partnerships so citizens work with police to prevent crime.
You'll see more policies and more strategies directed at smart policing. So, things that are community-focused and data-driven, because we know we have success when we can engage the community and use the data in a smart way. You'll see expanded citizen volunteer patrols.
City leaders say the increase in homelessness may be driving some crime numbers up, but they plan to keep pushing for a safer LA in every crime category. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week. The crime stats came out on the same day an LAPD officer filed a lawsuit against the LAPD for allegedly doctoring the crime numbers, but LAPD Chief Charlie Beck is denying those allegations. Will LA's homeless numbers rise or fall this year? As we await the official tally, Gil Reyes has more on the recent homeless count and why local leaders are hopeful with new money coming in.
Thousands of volunteers, like Susan Kowinski, hit the streets to help count the number of unhoused people in Los Angeles County.
I work in an area where there are a lot, right in front, and so it's in my face, like, daily. And I drive by it daily. And I, we've, the city has to be able to do something, and if this is our small part to figure out how many there are, so that we can figure out as a city what to do about it, then it's, it's something.
Over three days, the counters covered nearly 4,000 square miles, along streets, in alleyways, and around transit stops. The homeless count is part of a national census reported to the federal government to help fund the programs to help the unhoused.
To help individuals, families, teens, vets, seniors, the disabled.
Homeless women are especially vulnerable. Too often, they are the victims of sex trafficking and left to the mercy of gang members and pimps.
Last year's numbers in Los Angeles County rose dramatically, a 23% increase. Many people are wondering when the situation will visibly improve, but Mayor Eric Garcetti is hopeful with voter passage of Measures H and HHH, bond measures for more homeless housing and services.
We will see pop-up villages and new shelters. We will look at the permanent housing. The dollars just started to flow in October, so that's part of the reason. You pass it, it takes a few months. But we have begun already to see what that impact feels like.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have work to do. City and county leaders say they'll continue to collaborate like never before in hopes of finally ending the problem. In North Hollywood, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Numbers from the homeless count are expected to be released this spring. The LA City Attorney's Office ups the ante in its feud with President Trump. As Gil Reyes reports, the city attorney is responding to Trump's order to end protections for young undocumented immigrants.
The LA City Council directed City Attorney Mike Fier to take legal action to try and stop the cancellation of DACA, or Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals. President Trump decided to end the program protecting undocumented immigrants who arrived in America as minors from deportation, but also gave Congress till March to come up with a compromise deal to keep the Dreamers here. So far, no deal.
When I was elected a little more than four years ago, I never anticipated that our office would be so deeply involved on federal issues, but here we are.
Fier's office has repeatedly clashed with the president. LA has rallied other cities to support creating injunctions to protect the young Dreamers from deportation, and also in rejecting Trump's travel ban on Muslim nations. And that was all in just year one of Trump's term. What's in store for year two?
And not knowing exactly what issues lie ahead of us, except knowing that we will be ready for those issues too.
At City Hall, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Of the 800,000 DACA recipients who could face deportation starting in March, one-third of them live in California. Well, even when it comes to a scrimmage test, these students are on their A-game. Rasha Goel has more on how local students are prepping for one of the most prestigious regional science competitions held in the city.
250 top science students from 29 high schools practiced answering challenging college-level math, science, and technology questions in preparation for their regional competition at the annual LADWP Science Bowl, held at the LADWP John Ferraro Headquarters Building.
That is correct, 10 points for Team A.
Students were from public, charter, and private schools from the LA Unified School District.
It's the Silver Anniversary Year, Science Bowl XXVI, when we started in 1993, so we're getting very good participation from all parts of the city and the school district area.
Just studying in general, learning more is always a benefit, and getting to know the people on the team is great, and competing, the competitive aspect is amazing.
For schools such as North Hollywood High School, the competition must be fierce. The team has set a record in winning 18 times out of the 20 they have participated.
The tradition counts, I guess, when you're, when you're joining a team that's won 18 of 20 regionals, you take it seriously, and you don't want to be the team that loses.
We're all passionate about science, and we like, try to share it among all the people who are in Science Bowl. And when we practice, we practice really hard. We try to, like, write, write difficult questions for each other and challenge each other.
I love it, personally. It's a great way to sort of, sort of see how well you understand the material.
And these students are definitely focused on winning. In fact, LADWP regional championship teams have won four national titles and placed among the top five teams 11 times. Plus, not a bad thing to mention on a college application.
Students that put participation of Science Bowl into their college applications, the colleges are looking at that as a positive criteria for selection.
I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
More than 200,000 students have participated in this program since it began in 1991. Well, even cyclists familiar with the LA River may not have known of the secret views located just off the beaten path. Gil Reyes goes on an exclusive river-walking tour for a different experience from LA's east side.
Here's a glimpse of the hidden wilderness just a stone's throw from downtown. This is the somewhat obscure northeast side of the LA River, the Glacell Park side. To get there, we'll need our tour guide, Anthea Raymond, and her two LA River corgis.
We're at the Bowtie Parcel. It's a parcel of land owned by the California State Parks, and it was once part of the train's infrastructure that was all here, but now it's a place where we have campfires, where we have art projects.
We also have our trusty corgis, Kasia and Chase, leading the way to a secluded, narrow opening just below the Bowtie Parcel. Though there's a lot of concrete along the banks for flood control, there are also surprisingly scenic views. Here, we catch our first glimpse of the river and walk further down.
We're in the Glen Del Narrows, left bank, Glacell Park side. In the summer, you'd look out and see kayaks. This is part of the kayaking section of the river. It's also the part of the river where underneath is cobblestones rather than concrete, so you get tons of natural stuff here, like trees. Wildlife, birds, sometimes coyotes and other animals as well, like these guys, too, down here in the riverbed. You know, it's a special place, it's a cooler place, it's much more temperate than you'd find even just up the concrete banks here.
Sitting here along the banks, we can also see the other, more visited side of the river, the Frog Townside, also known as the Elysian Valley. Its popular bike path lures most of the river's visitors.
We're sitting, we're, of course, looking across the river at the bike path right now, but the bike path has, has been a great way to introduce people to the LA River. People kind of come through here and, and get their first taste of the river and what it's like sometimes. And you mentioned the Spoke Bicycle Cafe that's now able to be supported by all the traffic along the bike path. People biking in and enjoying some of the parks as well.
From our side, we can also see the train pass by and how it contrasts with the views of the two freeway, the river, and all the vegetation surrounding it. You can also imagine the possibilities as the city plans to remove much of the concrete to provide more recreational activities along 11 miles.
It's just a fabulous mixture that makes this, this section of river in particular just so dynamic and unique.
And we are in the city of Los Angeles, even though sometimes you lose yourself in the nature and think you may be somewhere else.
Well, you, you can't help but be reminded occasionally here, and it's fun to sort of meditate on that, that balance, you know, nature and not-so-nature.
So that's the short version of Anthea's two-hour walking tour. All that's left is to thank her and thank the LA River corgis with some treats, and maybe take a photo while I'm here. As picturesque as these images may be, you can't really appreciate this place until you're actually here. The sights, the sounds, the smells, the total atmosphere of this place, the LA River. Reporting from the less-explored Glacell Park side, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
All proceeds from the walking tour benefit the nonprofit LA River Expeditions. More info can be found on Twitter. A legend in the Chicano arts movement is remembered for his softer side. Gil Reyes shows us a new exhibit in La Plaza in downtown.
Mixing his East Los Angeles barrio roots with pop culture, celebrated artist Gilbert Magoo Lujan has made a lot of people smile.
He always infused his work with humor. Flying UFO, Pan Chicanos, and, you know, new, new fashion statements that he's created based on these forms. So this is all his way of projecting what a future might look like.
Nache Lujan, talking about his late father's new exhibit, entitled Recuerdos del Futuro, 81 works, on display at Plaza de Cultura y Artes near Olvera Street. These are paintings, drawings, and sculptures depicting Magu Landia. That's Magoo Lujan's satirical take on the future, based on Chicano heritage and growing up in LA.
He comes from the barrio, and he uses what he calls the "rasquacha sensibility." Rasquacha meaning using whatever is on hand. So he'll see his sculptures made out of sticks, out of cardboard.
Using items found in his home and in his backyard to create the art. Lujan was also founder of the group Los Four, the pioneering artist collective that helped bring Chicano art to the mainstream in the '70s and '80s. He passed away in 2011, but his son says he would have been thrilled that future generations are appreciating his work.
Oh, he would have been over the moon. I mean, they really did an amazing job. La Plaza has been a great partner.
And these artworks are on display at La Plaza de Cultura y Artes through June 25th in downtown Los Angeles. I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
There's also a mini-theater featuring a short film on Lujan. The theater seats are from a lowrider car. Lujan loved lowriders. Well, 10 years ago, Councilman Jose Uizar launched an initiative aimed at revitalizing the historic Broadway corridor, and today, as Angelenos come out to enjoy this one night, it's a vision that he says has been successful in bringing back people and investment to the area. Rasha Goel has more.
10 blocks of live entertainment, art, food, and much more. Night on Broadway, Free to All, is a one-night event where Broadway is blocked off from First Street to Olympic and open to the public to experience a night of the arts.
We don't, we don't have enough events like this in Los Angeles, and there's such diversity. You'll see all the different types of people here, and everyone's really having a good time.
This year marks the final anniversary of Councilman Jose Uizar's vision to bring back the theaters and historic buildings on this corridor. It's all about recognizing the theaters that were once so prominent in Los Angeles.
We have 12 historic theaters on this corridor, and we're looking to bring them back to life. Now we have six open, and they have programming year-round. And tonight, Night on Broadway, is about inviting people back to Broadway for them to see what's here.
Last year, I came for the very first time, and I came to one of the theaters, and I was astonished and amazed by all the sculptures, and everything was so original.
The family-friendly night has something for everyone.
Once upon a time, I was eating some spaghetti.
There are so many amazing things to experience here, but one of my absolute favorites was the Earth Harp, invented by William Close. Now, this is the largest stringed instrument in the world, with illuminated strings that stand 200 feet high.
The strings are going from the chamber and bridge here up to the top of the building, and it's actually turning the building into the instrument. I discovered that you can make sound this way by running your hands along the strings, and it kind of made my imagination go wild.
It's what people love, is to be outside, walking around, seeing each other.
From the silent disco, where people danced to beats heard only through special headphones, to live shows, it was truly a night that brought people and the arts together. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Officials estimate nearly 250,000 people came out for the fun. While officials make an arrest in connection with recent church fires, Angelenos come out to learn how President Trump's new tax plan will impact them, and major improvements are coming to Watts. All these stories in City Beat. Los Angeles Fire Department Chief Ralph Terrazas, Mayor Eric Garcetti, LAPD Chief Charlie Beck, and other officials held a press conference to announce the arrest of Christian Michael Garcia, who authorities say has been linked to fires at various places of worship, including Resurrection Church in Boyle Heights, the scene of the press conference. Garcia's facing 20 felony charges, including vandalism, arson, hate crimes, and burglary. Bail was set at $750,000, and if convicted as charged, Garcia faces a maximum sentence of more than 23 years in prison. Garcia was arrested by the inter-agency House of Worship Task Force for crimes prosecutors said took place over the last two years involving four churches in Pasadena and Los Angeles. The most recent crimes for which Garcia is suspected are the fire and vandalism at Resurrection Church and Church of Angels in Pasadena. House Minority Leader Nancy Pelosi and Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti took part in a roundtable discussion on President Trump's new tax plan's effects on working California families. The event is part of a national tour by an activist group opposing the tax plan. The Tax Policy Center found that 86 million middle-income families across America will pay more in taxes, while the richest 0.1% will get a nearly $150,000 tax break with the Trump tax. Millions will see a 10% increase in health insurance premiums, and seniors will pay more from forced cuts to Medicare.
It is going to affect all of us, and we need to work very hard among, with as much concord as we can gather, how much agreement, to turn it back.
Together, we can take control of not just our city council, to ensure that we have a leadership that is prepared to take us into brighter futures, but that we could also be greater engaged in what's taking place locally and in Washington, DC.
Mayor Garcetti also announced that Los Angeles has been awarded $35 million in state cap and trade funding for affordable housing and environmental initiatives in Watts. The mayor said Watts has a special place in LA history, and this grant is a big step toward improving the quality of life, renewing focus on public health, and providing better access to affordable housing. LA's grant will help fund redevelopment of the Jordan Downs Public Housing Project, which includes rebuilding distressed units, creating new recreational centers and programs, opening nine acres of green space and about 165,000 square feet for retail. It will also fund several urban greening projects across Watts, including an electric-vehicle car sharing and shuttle program for local residents. It was a block party that stretched for several blocks. Anna Marcos brings us more on the Los Angeles Community Festival and how it's helping to rebuild a neighborhood that struggles with lack of jobs and housing.
A little music and a little dancing never hurt anybody. The Third Annual Los Angeles Community Festival kicked off in South LA, taking up three blocks along Avalon Boulevard. A sort of community service, health fair, and entertainment fest all rolled into one.
It's really good to see a community presence. I think, you know, being involved in the community is very important.
And I've met a ton of new neighbors. It's definitely been a great experience.
The Peace Chapel, a local church teamed up with the nonprofit group Rebuild LA, and with City Councilmember Kern Price's office to put on the event, bringing much-needed services to a community with few economic opportunities.
The Peace Chapel is not an ordinary church. We're not a regular religious institution. We're really making things happen in this community. We're providing housing and supportive services. We're also providing jobs.
We use entertainment, or whatever way we have to use, to bring the community out so that they can meet the people that are making decisions in their community.
A place where people want to live, want to work, want to play, and want to pray. That's the truly we want to live in, isn't it?
Wait a minute, that's barbecue smoke. And yes, barbecue there was, along with a bounce house for the kids and lots of other fun stuff. By the end of the day, you not only had fun, but maybe got a dental checkup, made a few friends, and got a referral for a job or housing. Now that's some festival. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Organizers also mark the soft launch of their new community and work source center nearby. Well, it's the Year of the Dog, and you're invited to the celebration. Enjoy a walk on a new path at the Silver Lake Reservoir, and voice your opinion on improvements at Elysian Park. All this in this week's Things to Do. Join the Port of Los Angeles for the Fourth Annual Lunar New Year Festival on the LA Waterfront, held indoors at Crafted at the Port of LA. 2018 is the Year of the Dog. This free community event features a petting zoo, traditional dancers, taiko drummers, lion dancers, face painting, arts and crafts, calligraphy and brush artistry, and a surprise grand finale. It all takes place Saturday, February 10th, from 3:00 to 7:00 PM at Crafted at the Port of LA. Take a walk on the newly-opened South Dam Path at Silver Lake Reservoir. The path has been closed to the public for years, but now that Los Angeles Department of Water and Power is set to open this pedestrian access, which will provide greater access to the facility, enhance the pedestrian experience at the complex, and allow parkgoers to have closer access to the water, which is something the community has desired for quite a while. Council District 13 and LADWP will host a community celebration and grand opening for the pedestrian access on February 10th at the South Dam Path. Do you live near Elysian Park and have ideas on how the park can be improved? Well, let your voice be heard at a community meeting hosted by the City Department of Wrekin Parks. The meeting will give you a chance to provide input on proposed park improvement projects. It takes place Saturday, February 10th at 10:00 AM at Gracie Simmons Lodge, located at 1025 Elysian Park Drive. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Ever notice how we no longer focus our attention on one thing at a time? We don't just walk, or even just drive. We focus on so many different objects, we don't notice the dangers ahead of us. We're a distracted society. We're blind to the importance of being safe, to the things that really matter, blind to the things that could actually save our life. We're blind to everything surrounding us. Be aware, move with care, watch the road.
Don't worry Patty, this isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Ever notice how we no longer focus our attention on one thing at a time? We don't just walk, or even just drive. We focus on so many different objects, we don't notice the dangers ahead of us. We're a distracted society. We're blind to the importance of being safe, to the things that really matter, blind to the things that could actually save our life. We're blind to everything surrounding us. Be aware, move with care, watch the road.
Don't worry Patty, this isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. If everyone would please take their seat. Today is Tuesday, February 6th. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome, and the public is here today. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buzkayino, Cedillo, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weiser, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue Wesson. Fifteen members in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
O'Farrell moves. Corretts seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Thank you. Price moves. Harris Dawson seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
If I could ask all to please rise. We'll be led today by Mr. Curran Price and our flag salute.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Madam Clerk, if we could continue going through the agenda?
Mr. President, there is a request to continue Items 1, C, E, and Q for 30 days to March 7th.
So ordered. Continue.
The Department of Building and Safety recommends that the following items be received and filed: Items H, P, R, and S, as the liens have been paid in full, and Item 1 N and T due to a change in ownership.
So ordered.
Additionally, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that the following lien amounts be reduced due to partial payments: 1B to $697.69, 1E to $11,229.42, and finally, Item 1F to $397.
Okay, so without objection, so ordered. Continue.
Item 1 is an item notice for public hearing.
Do you have cards on this item?
Yes, there are cards.
Okay, let's move on.
Items 2 through 18 are items for which public hearings have been held. There is a request to hold Item 13 on the desk.
Okay, let's do that, and let's vote on the remaining items. Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call Item Number 6 special, please.
Number 6 as well. Let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Continue.
Items 19 through 30 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are before this body. Mr. Blumenfield?
I'd like to call 28 special.
Let's hold 28. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
All right, continue.
President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment?
Thank you very much. I'm going to request Ms. Martinez, that Ms. Martinez come to the President's chair, and we will start off with our first presentation for today. Mr. Herman, you're disrupting this meeting. We're not going to have all those gyrations. So I'm telling you now, one more time, and then you'll be removed.
Good morning, Mr. Wesson. I heard you have a great presentation for us today.
I do believe that I have a great presentation, but I'd like to ask Albert, I think maybe some of my friends should come up here and join me and stand around me as I begin this presentation. Members, I'm sure that many of you have heard the expression, or heard the song, that this is a man's world. And when this country that we all live in now was created, it was a white man's world. This country was constructed to ensure that black people, and other minorities, and women, and gays, and lesbians, and people that practice certain religions, it was constructed to all but guarantee failure. But what the builders of this country could not fathom was that same American spirit that drove them to want to be the best that they could be, to want to live a good life is the exact same spirit that drove each and every one of us. There may have been more hurdles in our path, but we jumped over them, we crawled under them, we destroyed them. And this great nation that we all love, and it is, even with its flaws and its pimples, the greatest nation on this planet, we are the reason why, all of us are the reason why this is the greatest nation in the world. Let's give our country a round of applause. It is so important for us as a government, because it was governments back in the day that put in place laws and ordinances that made it challenging for people of color. So that's why it's so important for us as a government, for us as LA, to recognize and celebrate the contributions of all people. When you hear the expression, "we the people," guess what? We are those people. When I walk into this chamber, I look at Mitch O'Farrell, and Mitch, you may not look like the classic indigenous person or Native American, but it was Mitch's people who walked this country long before many others. And then the Europeans came in and they tried to conquer them, annihilate them, destroy them, but they did not. They're still here. And every year, we listen to Mr. Blumenfield, and Mr. Englander, and Mr. Corretts stand up when they talk about the Holocaust, and they bring in survivors, and they tell us the stories, how they survived the concentration camps, and they tell us the stories of their relatives that did not. And every year, Mr. Bonin, God bless him, Bill Rosendorf, Ron Galperin, and Mitch O'Farrell, bringing individuals from the LGBT community, where we talk about the great contributions that they've made to this great nation. And I am right, Mr. Bonin, it is LGBTQ. You didn't add any other symbols or initials yet. And it was right here in this very chambers that I met the young lady, Latina lady, who was a child, and her family filed the first lawsuit. It was the precursor to Brown versus Board of Education. The reason why we are LA and we are moving forward is because we recognize the history of all of our people. I am so proud today, because the individuals that are surrounding me, at my side, sitting, standing, are the reason why you can go to a small city, mid-side city, a big city, and turn on the television news and see people of color. The individuals that came before them cracked that door open, and the individuals that stand with me today are the ones that are standing tall, holding those doors open, so that anybody that's qualified, and anybody that has the drive, will have a shot to tell the news. They're the reason why you see diversity on television today where it relates to the news. You know, my grandparents would read the newspapers, because they wanted to see what was going on with Negroes and colored people. And those stories were not even written by us. So, black people decided that they would create their own newspapers, so that their people would actually know what the hell was going on. And not only were these informational periodicals for us to read, they led in the fight for civil rights and for human rights. And people need to recognize that when we, as black people, stood up to fight for our rights, we were fighting for yours as well. We fought for the rights of everybody in this country. So I'm so honored that in this year's Black History Month display, we will give you a snapshot, because it is impossible for us to get all of the history, but there will be a snapshot. But there will be a snapshot that will highlight the newspaper articles, and the people who started them, and the challenges they had to go through. And also, we will talk to you about these individuals that, I mean, can you envision what it was like to try to get on television and having your bosses saying, "Maybe they're too dark, maybe they're too light, and people will think that we're supporting race mixing." What kind of weird conversations went on in those boardrooms? And I will also tell you this, that those individuals that broke into this business, they weren't good. They had to be the best of the best of the best. So I invite each and every one of you to go to the bridge and to look at this display, where we try to give you, again, a snapshot of black history where it relates to the media. And there's one panel from a newspaper that probably none of you ever heard of, and you walk and say, "Why the hell is that here?" It's called the Call and Post. The Call and Post is from Cleveland, Ohio. That is the town of my birth. The very first job I ever had in my life was selling that newspaper, twenty cent. Every time I sold one, I got a nickel. I got fifty newspapers once a week. People would see me and run the other way, because I sold those fifty papers. Two dollars and fifty cents is what I would make. But the first African-American mayor of a major city was from Cleveland, Ohio. His name was Carl Stokes, made history. But also, he's the first African-American to ever become a news anchor in New York. He was a great man, so that's why you will see that on the wall. And what I urge all of us to do, wouldn't it be cool, David, and Monica, and Mike, if we did displays on the bridge that celebrated everybody's heritage? Wouldn't it be great, so that people could come here? Last year, we had students from LAUSD. So I'm going to work with all of you, if you want to do it, because the displays are a big hit. And I just looked at Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Krikorian taught us, every year we stand up with Mr. Krikorian and demand that Turkey recognizes all of the atrocities that they committed against the Armenian people. That's who we are. We are LA. We are the leaders. So today's presentation celebrates my people, my brothers and my sisters. And Albert, I jokingly said to you, where's Albert Lord that works for me? Where are you, Albert? I jokingly said I was going to come up here and do this without any of my notes, and I did it without any of my notes. You give me a round of applause. I'll take a mercy applause. But guess what, Albert? I don't know who I'm supposed to bring up next. I think it's, I think it's Ms. Edmonds, right? Right?
Ariane Edmonds.
Well, if I said Edmonds, why, yeah, I was right. Ms. Edmonds from the Liberator, the first paper. Let's bring her up.
Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Ariane Edmonds. I am a fifth-generation Angelino, and I'm here to represent the Edmonds family, and all of my ancestors that came before me to lay the pathway for the work that I do every day. I am here to represent Jefferson Louis Edmonds, who started the Liberator newspaper. He's featured in the exhibition in the Bridge Gallery. You'll have a chance to go and take a look and learn more about him. But the important piece that I want all of you to take away from his legacy and his work was his vision for Los Angeles. He invested in the early settlers of the black Los Angeles community. He had a vision for a community where we could have homes, and have wealth, and grow. And what a powerful investment that he made, and that's something that we all get to do. So I want to thank the Council President, Herb Weston, for inviting us to participate in this exhibition. I want to, yeah, I want to thank, I want to thank the library, the Los Angeles Public Library, and led by John Sabos, for inviting us to be partners, so that we could share the Liberator with the world. And I'd also like to thank my family. They're all here, I want them to stand. There's a lot of us. They, in many ways, represent the vision that Jefferson had for our city, so thank you.
Let's give her one more round of applause. And now I'd like to bring up from the National Association of Black Journalists. In fact, I think, Tony, were you the first president? But anyway, somebody who really needs no introduction, let's have Mr. Tony Cox come on forward.
Thank you very much. It's a, it is a pleasure to be back in this room again. It brings back memories from the 1970s and the 1980s, and I see things change, and yet they're still the same in a lot of ways. In 1980, the Black Journalists Association of Southern California was founded because we wanted our story to be told. LA Times at the time was running stories about the Long Beach Freeway, and it was called the Nairobi Freeway. And it was called that because people were not happy that the folks of color from Linwood, Southgate, were driving the 710 to go up into South Pasadena and Pasadena. So we formed this group, and we began to make sure that, A, we were represented at various news outlets around the city, and secondly, that we began to make sure that our stories were told accurately. That fight continues today in 2018. I'm very proud to have been a part of it, humbled to be a part of such a group with such outstanding people, many of whom are still working, some of them standing right here with me today. The fight goes on. I just want to close by acknowledging a name that probably nobody in this room under fifty knows, and the name is Wendell Green. Wendell Green was the first black reporter to cover City Hall. He had an office right over there, it was the Afro News Service, and Wendell opened the door for a lot of us to come through, and I just want to say thanks to him, thanks to you, thanks to our councilman, the president, for the leadership that he has shown. It is a big thing to do this, and we appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you all.
And now for the current leader, Travell, aren't you going to come say a few words? Let's give Travell a round of applause.
Thank you so much. My name is Travell Anderson. I'm a film reporter at the Los Angeles Times. I cover diversity in Hollywood with a focus on black and queer film. I'm the current president of the LA chapter of the National Association of Black Journalists, formerly known as the Black Journalists Association of Southern California. I'm honored to be here to represent our organization and carry on the torch that so many of the folks who've come before me have done, including Tony, our founder Valerie Shaw, and all the former presidents. If I could get all of the members of NABJLA, our board, former presidents, to stand up and be recognized, thank you all so much for joining us. And because we have so many black journalists in the room, I have to use this as a plug. We meet every third Saturday of the month at the SAG-AFTRA headquarters at 11:00 a.m. We look forward to seeing many of you all in the room. You don't have to be black to join our meetings, and you don't have to be a journalist. We welcome everyone, and we hope that you will continue to support NABJLA and the journalists of color who are here doing the important work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Travell. And you know, something interesting, you know, Tony got up here and he talked about, you know, we're, the things, we're fighting things today that we had to fight in the past, and I want to say, Mr. Abrams, who started, Edmonds, who started the Liberator, there was a period in his life in the South where he was fighting voter suppression, like in like 1880, 1890 something, and we are still fighting that very fight today throughout this country. So the fights go on, and by looking at the people beside me and behind me, the fighters continue to grow. It is now my pleasure to bring to you an individual that many of you know, an individual that stepped in and really helped save, in a way, the first major African-American newspaper in this city, the second-largest African-American newspaper in this country at one point, the largest African-American newspaper west of the Mississippi, and that's our own, Danny Bakewell. Let's have Danny Bakewell.
Thank you very much, Council President. I am truly humbled and honored to be before this august body. Many of us have interacted, we know each other, and we know each other because of our work. You guys do an amazing, ladies do an amazing job. For us at the Los Angeles Sentinel, to be able to carry the message of African-Americans throughout this city and throughout this country is a true honor and privilege, one that we don't take lightly. If you really want to understand the scope, depth, and breadth of the black press, just reflect on last year, when we had this, I hate to call him a gentleman, but this man who came in this council chambers and berated our president, berated our Jewish brothers, berated our Latino brothers as our women, over and over again, and nobody would call him out. Nobody would call him for what he was. Talk bad about our Asian brothers and sisters. The Sentinel did the first major article that really called his behavior into question. We're still tracking that. When things go on in this city, we take the leadership to make sure everybody knows about it. We all stand here on the shoulders of those that have come before us. Mr. and Mrs. Washington, who founded the Los Angeles Sentinel, did an amazing job with nothing. Every newspaper that came out, many of the things here, I remember Tony used to walk around with his tape recorder and his microphone. Today, that seems impossible. It seems impossible to get a paper out on the street, if you have to go and you have to type everything, every story that's coming out, lay it out, print it, and then deliver it to our customers. But the will and the determination of the people in the black press has never failed the community. As Herb said, we not only represent the African-American community, but we represent all of the community. And when we do well, everyone does well. And we really appreciate the support that we get from all of you sitting here. We appreciate the support we get from Herb, particularly from Marquis, from Kern, who represents the African-American community, because it's that kind of leadership, and there's so many things that need to be done. We're the black press, and you're honoring us, but you're honoring us because we're telling the stories and the news that you make, the things that you make happen, these big edifices that's going on, going up in our community. Many times, they don't have people of color working on them. There are no jobs in our community. There are no contracts being given to our community. We can tell that story, and we tell it from the perspective of people who desire to work. We show photographs of people who want to work assembling, and we don't say that they're assembling because they want to cause havoc. We say they're assembling because they want a job. And people begin to realize, and it resonates, that there is a contribution that we have to make, and we're committed to forging that contribution forward. I want to thank all of you again. I want to thank our Sentinel staff, I want to ask them to stand up. I can introduce our staff and my family at the same time. One is my son, he's the managing editor, my granddaughter, my sister Pam, and my nephew Brandon. Thank you again. We're humbled and pleased to be here.
Let's give it up one more time for Danny Bakewell. Now, I really wish that I could identify everybody that's here with us today, but that is an impossibility. But I want to thank you all from the bottom of my heart, the council's heart, for being here. Now, I want to bring up some folk from CBS. Right, Albert? Am I right? Am I on, you don't have to come, Albert. You don't know, you got to learn how to ad lib, Albert. You know, you're my foil, Albert, just, just, no. Anyway, we're going to bring up folk from CBS, and I mean, everybody knows, you know, we got Big Jim Hill, former football player, one of the classiest guys on television, but we, and we have Pat Harvey with us today, and I think we're going to have a few words from Pat Harvey, not just representing CBS, but representing all of the brothers and sisters that are standing with me today. So let's give it up for CBS, Pat Harvey, and everybody else.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. And good morning, everyone. It is so good to be in this chamber again, and to see all of you in the same setting. I see Councilman Joe Busciano smiling over there. And just know, when we do stories about you, sometimes they may not be things that you like, but you know what? We also report the good, right? We do, but that's our job as journalists. And I just, I'm just appreciative to be here and be recognized with all of my brothers and sisters, because the press has taken such a bad rap over the last year or so, so it's nice to be recognized. I've been at KCAL-CBS now for, it'll be 29 years in October.
Wow.
Mr. Weston says, "I remember when you first came." I remember meeting you, Danny Bakewell, Tony Cox, and I just want to thank you all that I'm up here for your tremendous support. They've supported me since I've been in Los Angeles. I've been working for almost 40 years, started quite young. I like to say as a stable genius, but I'm so honored to see journalists of color here today, some of whom I've met for the first time, but I watch on television on a daily basis. It's very rare to get us all together in the same place. So I don't really want to talk about my career, because I think it's on the wall, so I don't want to spend time talking about me. But he mentioned Jim Hill. Wow. Jim joined CBS in 1992. He was at KABC four years before that. He has been a rock for me as well, because nobody knows the city like Jim Hill. He's just personified in everything that he does, in all of his sports reporting, and not only that, but just as a humanitarian, a human being. I happen to know that he mentors young people, he's on so many different boards, he gives back to the community. And to me, that's what really makes a journalist. Not only that you sit and you report, you disseminate news and information every day, but when you are giving back to the communities that you talk about, then that, to me, says that you really understand what your job is, and I truly feel that that's what my job is. Amy Johnson joined our Ventura Bureau, in fact, she started it in 2005, and she's been with us ever since. You can see her on weekends, Saturday and Sunday mornings. She does a terrific job, holds it down all by herself, yes, she does, and also a wonderful mother, cancer survivor. So, so many of our staff are people that are not only dedicated their profession, but also dedicated to their families and their communities. So on behalf of not just CBS2, KCAL9, but ABC is represented here, NBC, of course, and you're going to hear from Beth White, but also KTLA, KTLA, make some noise. Yeah, mother, family, and also KTTV, Fox. So thank you again for recognizing all of us today.
Let's give it up for Pat. Give her one more round of applause. And Mr. Weezer, I would tell the story of you and I and Jim Hill playing golf. But I, I will not do that. I will not humiliate myself. But I, I will not do that. I will not humiliate myself. It is my pleasure to bring up an individual that I've gotten to know over the years, and when I talk about, so many of the people here are just classy, and like I said, they, they really have to be the best of the best of the best. And so, it is with great pride that I bring to you a friend that I have the highest respect for from NBC, and that's Beverly White. Let's give Beverly a round of applause.
Thank you, Council President. He's making me blush. Trust, he's making me blush. It is an honor to be here, because I'm, as they say, batting cleanup. I get to remind you all that it's not just about us so-called high-profile folks on camera, or even the photojournalists who make it happen, but the copy editors, the content producers, all of the folks behind the scenes who push these journalism stories forward with black presenters telling and writing and reporting. We are obviously at your service in the fourth estate, as it were. It's been said, democracy dies in darkness, but these are the folks behind the scenes and on the case, trying to make sure that our community gets it right, stays strong, continues to be the role model for inclusion, because it's not about tolerance. We're pushing for diversity and inclusion, inclusion in our Los Angeles. So, thank you for allowing us to be a part, a proud part of this grand American experiment, and good day, and good luck, and God bless. Thank you, Council President Herb Weston, all members of the council for making this moment happen. We're seldom the focus of something this spectacular. It feels good. Thank you all so very much. Continued success, everyone.
And this could not have happened without Kern, Price, and Marquise Harris-Dawson. They did all the work, and on this one, I got all the glory. So, with that said, Madam President, I turn it back to you.
Yes, we have Mr. Kern Price on the queue. Good morning, sir.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. President, thank you for this.
Yeah, you did motivate me.
Tremendous, yeah. You needed a promotion.
No, you did motivate me, Kern.
I'm just so proud to be here as we celebrate our media professionals, because you are all positive role models, whether you're in front of the camera, behind the camera, whether you own the ink or you use the ink. I just want to say thank you, because you do help tell the story. Sometimes the story is not told. Sometimes the story needs to be told from a different perspective. Sometimes the story that needs to really change the lives of people that are living. So, I just want to say thank you for the role you're playing. Thank you for your contribution as consummate professionals, but also positive role models, giving back, making a difference. Continued success. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I'd first like to ask everybody to join me in giving our president a big round of applause for not only bringing this presentation today, but presenting our story and presenting our history in a way that it does what it should be and reflects our spirit, and that is the spirit of bringing everybody together and lifting up the entire community and society. So, one time for Council President Herb Weston. I'm also just, you know, very honored and excited to be in the room with all these journalists. Many of you who I've grown up watching and reading over the years, for many, many years, up until very recently, really up until the dawn of the internet, the only way to find out what was happening in your neighborhood in South LA, or Compton, or Inglewood, or our community was to get one of our black papers. I went away to college in Atlanta at Morehouse, and the only way I knew what was happening was because I could go to the library, and there's a section of the library where every African-American newspaper in the country was, they had subscriptions there, and I could read The Sentinel and The Wave, and the other papers that came from our community. And so, you all play a very, very instrumental role to this day for reflecting not just here, but around the world what's going on in our community. And to all the television personalities, you know, I'm in the generation where we would switch around to see, you know, one of us saying the news. So, if it was a big story and they had Beverly White on location, then we were watching Channel 4. And if it was another story and Pat Harvey was reporting, we'd switch over to see Pat Harvey, and we always, always watched our sports with Jim Hill, from all the time I can remember, in his double-breasted suits and his nice shag that he always had. We just really, really appreciate all of you and how you've represented us and how you've told our stories. And I'll end with making sure that we thank and acknowledge on behalf of Councilman Price, Councilman Weston, and myself, the Los Angeles Association of Black Personnel, who helped us put on this exhibit, along with Team Weston. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Harris-Dawson. I'm liking the bow tie. Mr. Bonin?
Thank you. Mr. Weston, you're probably wondering what the hell I'm doing, standing up for this presentation. First of all, thank you for doing this. The reason I stood up is, little-known fact, is that 25 years ago, for two years, I was a reporter at The Wave newspapers, and when I first got to Los Angeles. I actually covered Mr. Bakewell, plans for revitalization of Compton. You probably don't remember me. I'm sure you don't. You were very, very hard to reach on the phone. You were one of the toughest interviews to get in Los Angeles. But that experience of writing for The Wave and covering Compton and Watts was one of the most transformative of my life, as a new transplant to Los Angeles. Growing up in a white guy in a small town back east, it was a fascinating way to learn Los Angeles. I got to meet Merv Diemoli, and Celeste King, and Sweet Alice Harris. I got to have my first visit to First AME Church, and I got the opportunity to sit on front porches and listen to people tell me family stories of migrating from the South and what Los Angeles was like in the 60s and in the 50s. And I wanted to rise, because one of the stories I used to hear was about the guy who founded The Wave newspapers, Chester Washington. And I remember people talking about him. He died about 10 years before I worked for the paper. But he was born, I believe, on the East Coast, and he came here, and he was the first black reporter for what was then the Los Angeles Mirror Publications. Yeah, black, yeah, black news employee. And then he went to work for the Sentinel. And then he branched out on his own, and he bought a couple small newspapers, weeklies, and formed a chain of 13 newspapers, which was then the Southwest Wave newspapers. He died in 83, and there's actually a golf course named after him here in Los Angeles at Western and 120th. And I just looked it up, because I heard this legend, and I wanted to make sure it was true, that it was the, one of the first golf courses in Los Angeles where blacks were allowed to play. So, I just wanted to rise, to remember Mr. Washington and his legacy, and to thank you for the presentation.
Mr. Weston? Oh, Albert? Do your job, Albert.
Albert Mesta. Anyway, now, it is my pleasure, and I want the whole group to get around me as I present this, as I present this resolution signed by all of us, and let's get a good photo shot. Marquise and Mr. Price hustle on down, and then we're gonna go in the back. Everybody kinda... We got a whole lot of movement going on there. We good? Thank you, members. Thank you. One more round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. Weston. Congratulations to our honorees. Another big round of applause. Thank you for being here.
Don't leave anything in that.
Okay, members, we gotta continue our meeting. If I can please ask our audience that are exiting the council chambers to keep your voices down. We have to continue our meeting. Mr. Englander, I believe you have an introduction?
I do. I'm gonna wait till it quiets down just a little bit.
Can I just please have the folks, our visitors exiting the council chambers, please lower your voice? We have to continue our meeting. Thank you.
This is, this is more than an introduction. It's an introduction with a little bit of a story and an explanation. Madam President, I think you're gonna enjoy this. We have a, we have a very, you will. Trust me. I want to welcome, colleagues, the members of the Japanese nonprofit Women's Eye. I'm gonna wait, because I'm gonna wait for our Madam President to hear the story. She needs to get the pictures taken. Hold on one second. You guys are way too important, and you've been very patient, and it was a phenomenal and incredibly important presentation we just had by our council president. But I want to make sure that you get the recognition that you well-deserve for being here as well. So, I want to welcome, Madam President, the Japanese nonprofit Women's Eye. It's 2018 Tomodachi Tohoku Grassroots Leadership Academy to here and welcoming here to Los Angeles City Hall. I'd like to thank Dr. Lucy Jones for hosting their visit. We have much to learn about these women, and let me just tell you why. Women's Eye is a nonprofit organization that was created in the aftermath of Japan's March 2011 triple disaster, an earthquake, tsunami, and of course, the Fukushima power plant meltdown. Their homes and whole communities were devastated. They were damaged at a level that's hard for us to comprehend. In fact, if you think back to the Northridge earthquake that killed 57 people, and the point that we plan and talk about it and remember it today, their triple disaster killed 18,000 people. These women understand what it means to lose everything and to come back from the brink. They've all risen up to create new businesses, to support their families, and to rebuild their communities. Let's give them a round of applause. The goal, the goal of the Women's Eye is to empower young women in the disaster-affected regions, reconstruct their communities, create opportunities for women's leadership, affect change, and encourage entrepreneurship, to improve women's quality of life in their communities. They are truly inspiring. They will be here in LA till February 11th to meet with leaders of nonprofits and women who are trying to make a difference in our community, to see leadership in action, to learn how we work together as a city, to gather ideas that make their own community even stronger. Their resilience in the face of tragedy is an inspiration to the entire world. I hope that we can learn from these incredibly strong women, and that we, as a city, can come together to better understand what it means to be truly prepared for natural disasters. Ladies, I can't thank you enough for not only what you've been through, but your courage and leadership to continue on, to rebuild and bring people together, your inspiration and passion to come out of the face of tragedy when you've been through so much, and now, here you are, traveling the world, welcoming you to our city. To be here, to learn from us, no, so we can learn from you. Make no mistake, you have much more to teach us, and we truly appreciate and welcome you here to the city of Los Angeles. I'd like to ask Dr. Jones just to say a few words, if you would.
Thank you so much, Mr. Englander, for having us here, and I'm hosting these women to come to Los Angeles, because, as Mitch just said, I think we have a lot to learn from them. We think of Northridge as a disaster, but we don't know what it really is. These women do. Most of them lost family. They've lost their houses. They've lost everything, and they're responding by creating new opportunities in a place where it's pretty difficult for women to step forward. They've become entrepreneurs. So, as Mitch said, I want us to learn from them, and thank you very much for having us here.
Thank you very much. Let's give them a big round of applause.
Very nice to see you back, Lucy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bonin?
No, that was a...
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, did you have a special announcement?
Yes, Madam President. On two items, there are going to be some changes, or possible changes, that I'd like to announce before we start taking public comment. On item number six, there may be an amending motion to increase the total amount of the firearm recovery reward program funds to $25,000, and the amount of reward per tip from $100 to $1,000. And on item 28, there are one technical correction and two others. In recommendation one, the word "federal" should be stricken, and the word "state" inserted. Secondly, there's, will be an amending motion instructing the Department of Building and Safety in consultation with DWP to report back in 90 days on a recommendation that would be effective in reducing the demand in buildings for natural gas. And third, there will be a request from the Department of Water and Power to establish aggressive 2028 and 2038 building electrification targets within their 2018 Integrated Resource Plan that align with the city's existing greenhouse gas reduction targets as described in the Mayor's Sustainable City Plan. I recommend that we reopen public comment on item six for anybody who's signed up.
Okay, thank you. So, those two items have not been circulated yet, but we're gonna open public comment for those items as well. Mr. Herman? Are you speaking, Mr. Herman, or not? You field dog cards for item number 1A, item six, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26A, 26B, 26C, 26D, 27, 28, 29, and items 30, and general public comment. Go ahead.
Well, now that we're all familiar with the lanes, there are many persons here not familiar with the lanes, dealing with compliance and code violations, dealing with abatement nuisance. Well, it's not your jurisdiction to judge what is one's property versus what is one's chinchero, like you have in the city of Los Angeles, blight in an eyesore city. So, I'm here in protest on behalf of a gentleman on item J at 105 West East Street, AKA 501... at 105 West East Street, AKA 505 North Avalon Boulevard. Why do you suppress people with these liens? Why do you discourage people not to stand here and rattle you about why they're upset emotionally and mentally over the abuse of these liens? They're unconstitutional. You don't send certified mail. You don't address the owner occupant, as opposed to allegations. So what is one man's gold is another fool's interpretation of a lien. And then I go into item number six, in which I signed up for, regarding the process of our Second Amendment. What is a firearm recovery? Well, certainly it's not a reward, because if you turn in a reward, snitches get stitches. What does that mean? It means that the city will not protect you for ratting out for a measly $1,000. Isn't, isn't the life of someone's harm from a firearm worth more than that? I would say you should pay people $25,000 to turn in some asshole with a weapon who's gonna use it under mass destruction, Mr. City Attorney, for the record. You moron. And then I go into the other items in the far back of this goddamn booklet, like in item 30. For example, Mr. Harris Dawson amending prior console for what? Regarding expanding public bathroom access? Well, you could smell the urine already in Los Angeles. You could see the defecation throughout our public sidewalk and streets that we do have a hepatitis outbreak. That's the reason why I've been coughing back there, because I suffer from an illness. And you're not gonna throw me out of a public meeting for coughing. You see, that's a part of my disability, is that I have an illness. And you can't discourage me in retaliation for talking about public bathrooms. If we do not have enough public bathrooms, then you cannot discourage people from going into the mountainsides or hillsides and defecating, urinating in a public place. Because you continue to deny access for bathroom use as we don't have in the subways.
You can start your general public comment now.
Now that in Van Nuys, I was said, as I was thrown out for simply making this gesture. You oppressive rotten motherfuckers. Stop suppressing public speech. Stop suppressing our freedom of expression. If you can't tolerate an intensifier, if you can't be reasonable to understand a bitch like you, Madam Chair, or a little pussy like Jose Weisar, then you will be subjected to criticism under the Ralph M. Brown Act. And the Bayak will suggest that you not threaten public speakers and force them down the stairs in Van Nuys when they're disabled. I will not be thrown out of a public building because you deny me access. So in all regards, motherfuckers, for the record, 42 USC, 1983, fuck you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Previn. Mr. Previn, are you here? Okay, Mr. Previn, you have filled out cards for item 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, 1E, 1F, 1G, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, and you also included cards for item number six. Go ahead.
Okeydoke, thank you. Thank you very much. It's Eric Previn from CD2. I live in Studio City. And you have a busy, busy agenda. And first of all, I'd like to address what Fabel made a small amendment for the tip line regarding a firearm and the reward. I think it's a good choice to increase it from $100 to $1,000. But the item itself earmarks just $1,000, which I think anticipated 10 separate awards of $100. I didn't quite hear because it was challenging, because the council members were speaking during the, you're reading that. But was it $1,000 times 10 so that you'll be able to do $10,000 now instead of $1,000? Or is it just one tip? Okay, one tip. Fair enough. Thank you for that. Item, I will say this. Holiday premium pay, Mr. O'Farrell, is critical, especially at LAX, especially among LAPD. And that's why at item 17, we are putting that into service and we appreciate it. I will say that that's for the airport police, obviously. And they definitely deserve to be paid at a premium over the holiday time. Item number 29, David Rue is taking care of Ms. Weitzler, finally, who is a consultant in the planning department, who he's bringing in without any bareback, sort of a 44 grand per six-month period and then another as needed. It's a, it's a cleaner way to go and I admire what he's doing there. And I certainly want to thank those who are involved in preparing the city for restroom usage by creating places where they can go. And I think the mobile pit stop in Echo Park is a great area. There were some concerns about HEPE, and that's why we want restrooms all over the city so that we don't have fecal matter, quite frankly, getting in the way of our lives. So I think it's a great gesture, and I think worrying about public health is something that has been a hallmark of our council. But, but let's also lean in close on, on COXY, which is the term for valley fever, which is a particular disease that unfortunately creates a vulnerability among African-Americans and Filipino women. And it's unfortunately up in Lancaster, not directly related to Mr. Fabel's concerns, but certainly related to my concern about a women's defense retention facility there.
I think we veered off of the agenda items, Mr. Previn.
Possibly, I will stipulate that move forward.
Mr. Previn, you guys sit to the items you filled out cards for, remember that?
Okay, fine. Victims are what we all care about, and I think that the city attorney's done a great job of receiving 1.7 million or 1.8 million from the county to help with the victims program. We very much appreciate it. We do not appreciate $76,000 going to his own little kitty and $300,000 going to indirect costs. Because this is money, my God, Supervisor, I mean, to be Supervisor-to-be, Martinez, this is, this is the victims. I mean, I think nobody has stood up on the table in regard to the victims more than you. And by the way, we heard about the initiative to roll out the sex trafficking initiative.
Mr. Previn, go ahead and start on your one minute of general public comment.
Sure. I'd like to thank Paul Coretts and Jeff Ebenstein and the whole CD5 office for reading theintercept.com, where on the weekend Joshua Previn, Eric Previn, and a woman named Eileen Brown wrote an article that speculated about the cause of wildfires being blamed on the homeless in Los Angeles, when in fact, climate change and urban sprawl are really more kind of creating an environment where... And of course, there was a very fast move to that determination that was made by the LAFD that was way too fast and frankly inaccurate, I think it's fair to say. And that's why I've asked the LAFD to ask the Los Angeles Times to correct their initial report from December 12 or December 13, whatever the date that they actually sent out, you know, a fake picture. I mean, this is not good for the city of Los Angeles, who are trying to protect all these people who are in harms way now. We do not want to create a mis-message. We definitely don't want people lighting fires in fire zones. But my God, I don't know that the priority is to push through electric motorcycles that are described by the council member as stealthy. One second.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Our next speaker is Mr. Walsh. Walsh, you are gonna speak on items number 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, 1E, 1F, 1G, item 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25, and your general public comment. Go ahead.
John Walsh, logging at HollywoodHighlands.org or at tweeting at JWalshConfidential. Building and safety? Well, you do a pretty good job there, number 19. See, if you do a good job, I'm not one of those white guys who say, "Well, we gotta get rid of all the colored people and have a white city the way we used to." I'm not one of those people. Although they're here today. And they're here all the time. In fact, some of the white people are actually minorities. They've turned into minorities. Mayor and City Ethics Commission relates to the appointment of David Stone to Las Vegas Convention and Tourism Development. The city is out of control. People are shooting up, shooting at one another at, on the boulevard, at Hollywood Boulevard. Everything's out of, out of control. And no matter what you say, that's the way it is. Number 21, 22. Street lighting, pretty good job. You know, I'm out there checking you out. And if I find some bad street lighting, I'll let you know. But I don't see, and the gangs love to destroy the street lighting. And that's the way it is. You can take back your one minute, and now I'm gonna go into general public comment.
Okay, let's give him his general, one minute general public comment. Go ahead, Mr. Walsh.
Okay. The president, the mayor of the city of Los Angeles, what happened? They, he dropped, he just dropped out of sight. Dropped out of sight. And then the police chief, he drops out of sight. That should be a banner headline in the LA Times. Now, I don't know if this is true, but I know that you know this is true. I understand the reason he quit and started packing up his stuff is that he got caught with his girlfriend, who is another police officer. Now, if that is false, I want to hear someone say, I want to hear Corcoran say, "You swine, you liar, how dare you destroy the reputation of the mayor of the city?" And I'm telling you right now, Martinez, Price, Rodriguez, they're all going like this. They don't want people to know what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Next speaker is Mr. Spindler. Mr. Coretts?
Just for the record, Mr. Spindler's been wandering around the council chambers in about 10 different locations, making goat noises and wild gestures and trying to distract us in every way possible. And should be given a warning.
Mr. Spindler, knock out the goat noises, please. I'm going to go ahead and tell you what you filled out your cards for. Thank you, Mr. Coretts, for, for that. Items 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, 1E, 1F, 1G, 1H, 1I, 1J, and 1K, 1L, 1M, 1N, 1O, 1P, 1Q, 1R, 1S, and 1T. Items number six, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26A, 26B, 26C, 26D, 27, 28, 29, and items 30, and your general public comment. Go ahead.
She's a nice lady.
Thank you.
So let's start with item number 1J, Pedro Velasquez in CD15. Again, being fucked by Joe Busciano for thousands of dollars. We've done our research, the lien was paid. Why do you keep persecuting people in the 15th district? Why? What do I have to do? I have to go to the grandma. I have to go to the head mafia figure of CD15 to correct this, right? Janice Hahn, I'm gonna go to Janice Hahn to deal with this item on 1J unless it's forgiven. Receive and file this, do not charge this man another dime of your ripoff, or I'll go to Janice, Jenny from the block, Hahn. And she'll go down to Venice, she'll go down to San Pedro and kick ass on this because she's tired of these liens. She does not like this. Janice Hahn, the gangster of CD15, so scary even I don't fuck with her. So now, we get to an item 30, expanding bathroom services. Did you know? Did you know that they still tax tissue paper that women use in the bathroom at 10%? Did you know they're still taxing these women's products? No, you didn't. But I do. Thank you Whole Foods for telling me the breakdown of the ripoff. Stop taxing toilet paper. Stop taxing tissue paper.
And Madam President, this seems to have veered away from the subject matter of the agenda.
Stop taxing women for using the bathroom. And stop the hepatitis outbreak by expanding restroom services. I want to use Mitchell Englander's bathroom. I want to use Paul Coretts' bathroom whenever I feel the need. I want to use Current Price's bathroom. I want to use David Rue's bathroom whenever I feel the need. I will bring my own toilet paper. I will clean up, but I will take a shit in every bathroom to celebrate item number 30. Yes, hepatitis A will die. Man will live, women will live. We are allowed to use all the council members' bathrooms in their personal residences and their district offices. I fully support it. I will not go to CD2, however. I will not use Paul Krikorian's bathroom. Look at him, you can see he has full-blown AIDS. I would never use his bathroom. So yes, on item 30, no more tax on women's toiletries. Stop this bullshit now, now.
You have your one minute of general public comment.
So, we have absences. The budget goat did not show up to the Budget and Finance Committee yesterday. You broke William E. Goat's heart. Tell them about it.
Yes, I tried to go to the budget meeting to see my favorite asshole, Paul Krikorian the goat. But he, he bounced out on me. Oh, who's this man? Do you want to pay me off? Stay on the subject. Yes, I'm sorry. So whenever we go to Monday, we have a right as puppets and goats to see that son of a bitch, Paul Krikorian, and thank the Turkish government for winning the war, yes. And they forgot, they forgot one. So to the people of Turkey, go get this son of a bitch and bring him back to Ankara, the war criminal.
Next speaker. I'm sorry, we're gonna go ahead and vote on item number 19. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. 15 ayes. Thank you. Next speaker, Carl Stokes. Anybody here with that name? Carl? Carl Stokes is not here. Patricia McAllister? Let me just, let me just remind you the cards that you filled out to speak on. Items number 1A, items number six, 26A and 29, and general public comment. Go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Secretary. Item number six, asking people to surrender their weapons. I'm against this. I don't think there's any weapon that's illegal. If you look at the 3 million homeless in Los Angeles, we need to keep our weapons. We're not having a homeless problem because of weapons, it's because of you politicians. Don't give up your weapons, and matter of fact, I want you to collect more. Because there will be a revolution if this continues, believe me.
Now, excuse me, there is no yalling and no clapping during our meeting, sir. I'm gonna ask you to restrain yourself, or I'm gonna ask you to leave. No, no, you're not interrupting the speaker. Can you please hold your time? Sorry, Ms. McAllister. This is your, this is your last warning, sir. Go ahead.
Item number one, I see we have 20 homes on here now for liens. I've counted them throughout the year. So we're doing like, you guys are doing about 4,000 liens a year. And then the items that shows who, who got their liens removed, we only see four or five a month. So I'm saying that we need to put a hold on liens, and we need to let the people know about this $5,000 they can get from the Handiwork program to fix the violations of their homes. The last time I checked, that money is going in somebody's pockets and not the pockets of the people, the homeowners. So we need to, we need to stop this. Another thing here about this fact that, about the toilets. The last three meetings, we've mentioned... The last three meetings, we've mentioned nothing about homelessness. I've been to the last three council meetings, and I go through the committee meetings. What they talk about in the homeless committee meeting should be in the council meeting. We've got 4 million homeless people in Los Angeles, and you don't have anything for three council meeting about homelessness. Everything about dogs and cats and money, you switching around here and there, helping each other out. And I strongly believe millions, billions are being embezzled. But anyway, I think we need to put homelessness on the committee meeting.
Madam President, maybe the speaker can connect to agenda item.
That's not an item on the agenda, ma'am. We've got to stick to the items that you filled out cards for.
Number 29, right?
Okay, yep.
Okay, I disagree with Councilmember Rue hiring some woman for $44,000 to go to his meetings. He's been in office long enough to have somebody on staff to do that. I mean, he's been here for a couple of years now, he's just not getting somebody on staff? No, no. Hire the people you've already hired and paid for to go to these meetings for you. Every time I go through these agendas, you're spending money on everything except the problem that we have here in Los Angeles, and that's homelessness. So tell Rue, he's not here, I don't see him here. We don't need to spend $44,000. That money could go and try to house some of those illegal alien Asians in his community. Okay, we're going to get those Asians out of here also. As far as the weapons, again, hold on to every weapon you get. We got the Bolsheviks, the children of the Bolshevik Russians here who've taken over this nation almost.
Okay, Ms. McAllister, you have your one minute of general public comment. Go ahead.
My, my public comment is, I'm ashamed, I'm a descendant of slaves. My great-great-grandmother was alive, and my older sister was alive, and she was born in slavery. I'm sad that this is Black History Month in this chamber, and three black men are on this, in this city council, and we've got 20,000 black people laying in the gutter in Skid Row, three blocks from here. We've got them in all your districts together, the three districts of these black council member, there are about 5,000 homeless. And they have the nerve to come in here and talk about Black History Month. You Negroes, it's going to be a day when, when selling out will not be a vocation. You can't get that job no more. Italians, whites, nobody would do their people like that and come among them, because they know they couldn't do it. We've got to start putting you Negroes in check.
No, I'm sorry, sir. Ms. McAllister, can you remove this gentleman? I've asked him once already not to clap or yell and interrupt our speakers. No, you're not. You heard me very well, sir. I was very clear. Ms. McAllister, go ahead.
We want to make you accountable, the three of you.
Thank you, sir. Have a good day. Thank you, Ms. McAllister. Next speaker, Pedro Velasquez. Next speaker. Is there someone here by the?
Let's wait till the, the noise stops with Emperor Julius leaving the room.
Next speaker, Pedro Velasquez, are you here? Pedro? Is Pedro Velasquez here? Here, that's you.
In Spanish, okay?
Let me give you, le voy a pasar un interpretito un momentito, por favor. En español, y luego la van a traducir en inglés.
Sí, estamos aquí porque nos.
Hacer que se diga en inglés.
Estamos aquí porque nos mandaron un cobro. Que nosotros ya pagamos.
We're here because they sent us a payment, we, you know, some charges that we already paid. I have here the check.
En el 2014 fueron a poner un documento en el negocio.
In the year 2014, they came and they put a document here in my business.
Porque no pagamos supuestamente unos cies de inspección de 500 dólares.
Supposedly because we did not pay some charges for $500.
Y subió casi 5,000 dólares.
So it's really, it went up to almost $5,000.
Nos mandaron un documento, de aquí venimos.
They sent us a document, and we came over here.
Pero como llegamos, que ya nos había nombrado, como ya nos había nombrado, no quisieron oír nuestro caso, que no podíamos hacer nada.
But they, the thing is that because they already called us, they said that they already heard our cases, and therefore we couldn't do anything.
Y pagamos todo el dinero.
But we paid everything.
Y ahora dicen que quedó un balance de aquel tiempo.
So now they're telling us that there is a balance from way back then.
Y nadie recibimos nada, nunca hemos recibido ningún documento, absolutamente nada.
And we have not received anything, nothing, not one single document.
Y ahora.
We've been paying, no, 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 no.
So this is what we have been paying every month that we have received this document, every year.
Con inspección.
We have been paying this for the inspection. We have the document here.
Y nunca nos dieron una notificación ni nada, hasta ahora que fueron a poner otro papel en la oficina.
And they have not given us any notification until right now, when they came to the office to give us another document.
Y ahora nos quieren correr 2,129.
Okay, señor, gracias. Muchas gracias. Este Buscagno, que va a decir unas palabras un momentito.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask that we.
Gracias, muchas gracias.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, sir. We're going to look into this matter for you, if you can continue this, ma'am, for two weeks.
Okay, we're going to continue this item for two weeks until February 20th. If our translator can please communicate this to Mr. Velasquez, this item's been continued until February 20th, two weeks, okay?
And Madam President, there's also a request to continue item 1M for 30 days to March 7.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. The next speaker is Melissa Garza.
Hi, I'm a member of Council District 13. On December 12th, if Mitchell Farrell's here, I'd like him to hear this. But on December 12th, there was a homeless encampment that caught and it exploded on fire. This homeless encampment was located on a private lot right across the street from an elementary school. This really concerns me because I reported the homeless encampment on the 3rd, and nothing was done about this. I understand, there's a problem because in the city, there's a private lot. And when we call to report this private lot, since we cannot report a address to 311, there is no way for us to actually follow up with this matter. It took me going down to the office of the Building and Safety Department, and actually going to numerous people, calling numerous people to get this, even with the county, to get this resolved with the city, to even clean this up, the matter. There is a huge problem that there is no way to actually take a record of anything that is a private lot of land that is vacant. There's no way to record that. So please.
Thank you, Ms. Garza, your time is up. Your time is up. Thank you very much. That concludes, Mr. Herman. That concludes general public comment and all speakers for all different cards. We're going to go ahead and move on to item number 6, Mr. Corcoran.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Members, a couple of hours ago, I was standing with the city attorney and the Attorney General of California to announce the prosecution of a man in my district who was facing several domestic violence charges, one previously and one currently pending, who was not entitled to be in possession of any firearm because of those domestic violence charges. And when state agents went to his house to identify two firearms that had, that he was registered owner of, to ask him to release those firearms, they found 25 weapons in his home. Some of these were semi-automatic weapons, some of them were, well, it included as well 2,000 rounds of ammunition, almost 20 high-capacity magazines, all of which were unlocked and illegally stored on shelves. This man lived within a couple of blocks of an elementary school in my district, within a couple of blocks of a park in my district, and in a neighborhood which in the last month has had 40 burglaries. So imagine if one of those burglaries had taken place at this home, and those 25 weapons were now out on the streets being distributed as future crime guns. So, it's just a case in point, an example of the need to have safe storage in this city. And I'm so grateful that this council has taken action to ensure that we have safe storage in the city by enacting the ordinance that we recently enacted. But all too often, weapons go unreported, illegal weapons go unreported. So what, the item before you will create a new reward system and an anonymous tip line to ensure that people who are aware of these weapons, these illegal weapons, will have an opportunity to safely, anonymously, report them, and will be incentivized to do so by the existence of the reward, which will allow law enforcement to take the appropriate actions to keep all of us safe. So, that's the point behind item number 6. I would like to offer a slight amendment, and I've, I thank Mr. Englander for hearing this in, in public safety and agreeing to the amendments. Item number 1, the amount of the reward should be $1,000, not 100. And in recommendation number 3, the amount in the controller's instruction to be transferred into the new appropriation fund should be $25,000 and not $1,000. So with those changes, I would ask for your eye vote.
Thank you, Mr., I will go ahead and second that. Thank you, Mr. Corcoran. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Item passed?
I'm sorry, 15 ayes.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and vote on item 13. Let's open the roll, close the roll. Mr. Corretts.
Yes, I don't want to keep ignoring this, but Mr. Herman and Mr. Spindler have been jointly engaging in a phony coughing fit to again, again try to disrupt the meeting. It's not a real cough. They're trying everything they can to make it impossible for us to follow this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Corcoran. They're trying fake coughing again, they will be escorted out. Thank you, Mr. Corcoran. Let's go ahead and open items number 13. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Let's go ahead and vote on item number 1. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Let's take items 20 through 27. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
15 ayes.
And let's vote on items 29 and 30 together. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Mr. Blumenfield for item 28.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, today I'm asking for your vote in favor of this resolution, Resolution 28, which is to oppose Resolution G 3536 from the California Public Utilities Commission, which would establish a moratorium on all gas connections for new commercial and industrial developments. The CPUC issued the proposed moratorium in response to an energy reliability concerns, allegedly, regarding the debate over gas storage operations at Aliso Canyon, to quote, "enhance natural gas reliability to core and non-core customers during the winter season, and thus preserve public health and safety." Which sounds like a good thing, we all want to preserve public health and safety. But, gas companies and others, this is a major overreach that is going to have impacts on us here in Los Angeles. The decision in the CPUC will have a direct negative impact on local businesses, and doesn't actually help us get off of natural gas. The Central City Association has reported that the moratorium could affect 700 projects in Los Angeles that are currently in construction or planning phases. However, the CPUC does not appear to provide any information regarding how much gas the moratorium would be expected to save, or the impact of potential new customers on overall in-base and gas use. Moreover, it does not appear the CPUC has considered alternatives to comparably reduce the demand for natural gas, which is something that we should all support. We should be focusing on reducing natural gas. We do not stand alone in opposing this moratorium. Many members of the State Assembly from both parties have voiced their opposition, including Democrats Miguel Santiago, Richard Bloom, Republican Philip Chen. It's across the board. Instead, what we should be doing, instead of issuing such a detrimental moratorium, the CPUC should sit down at the table with us here, so we can explore alternative strategies to lower our demand on natural gas and on dirty fossil fuels. The right thing for the environment is to focus on those issues, not to do this blind moratorium. So I ask for your eye vote to help support our residents. We, we have a, an amending friendly motion that Mr. Corretts, Mr. Weezer, and myself are putting forward, which I believe he's going to speak about, but basically get some report backs with recommendations on how we, we focus on lowering the demand, which should be our, our stated policy goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfield. Mr. Englander?
Great, thank you very much. Colleagues, I support the amendment, and, and what's coming before us on the amendment. But I won't be voting for this, because from my perspective, this is a transparent political ploy to get and drum up a lot of support for SoCal Gas against the moratorium, which would never, ever happen. It was pretty clear what they're doing. And in fact, right when this was proposed by the PUC as an option, which, again, I don't think would ever happen, the real work began by them and by a number of PR and lobbying agencies through various organizations, including business and labor and so many others, to get them on board. In fact, full-page ads have been taken out by some in the LA Times against the moratorium, which, again, would never happen. Support the amendment, but I'll be voting against this because I don't think it was done with a clear understanding from many of who is really behind this and the push to get people to support SoCal Gas and oppose the moratorium, which we all know would never happen. So with that, there's no, make no mistake, there's no doubt, we've got to end our dependency on these, and particularly close this facility once and for all in Aliso Canyon. There's no question, but that's where this is all coming from, and, and I'll be voting no.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank council members Blumenfield and Weezer for bringing this motion forward. I think it is a, a huge stretch for us to ask businesses that are in the pipeline about to open new businesses, new buildings, to not put in natural gas. And I'm the, the last one to be a fan of the natural gas industry, but I think this is, this is pretty ridiculous. And we obviously didn't have a streak of cold weather in which we really needed to use the gas. In fact, we had no weather virtually at all this year. So I, I think it's completely unnecessary. On the other hand, Governor Brown has asked the California Energy Commission to plan for the permanent closure of Aliso Canyon within 10 years, and hopefully we'll do it much sooner than that, both for public safety and to address climate change concerns from the leaking methane. And I think we actually absolutely need to take that step. And so, Councilmember Blumenfield, Councilmember Weezer and I are introducing an amending motion for your approval, which calls on our Building and Safety Department to work with DWP on a report back on, on how to reduce demand for natural gas in buildings, including the replacement of gas in thermal heating loads, water heating, and cooking in new buildings. DWP is already planning for increased electrification in their IRP, and these efforts will help them get there. So I ask for your support of the amending motion.
Mr. Englander?
Yes, Madam President, can we take two votes on this? Because I'd like to support the amendment. Thank you.
Yes, of course. Any other speakers on this item? Seeing none, let's go ahead and take the first vote on the amendment. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the item as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes, one no.
Thank you very much. Sending it forthwith for Mr. Blumenfield. Madam Clerk, what's before us now?
Madam President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, posted and referred members, are there any announcements? Seeing none, can we please rise for amending, adjourning motions, including the public? Are there any adjourning motions to my right? Seeing none. Any adjourning motions to my left? Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair and members. I ask that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Ms. Marian Marie Parent, who passed away this past January at the age of 1991. Ms. Parent came to California from New Orleans, Louisiana, like so much of our community, 1926, after graduating high school there in New Orleans. She came to California with the intent to build a life, and build a life in a city where segregation and oppression was far less direct than it was in, in the deep south. She came to California and got married, raised a family in South Los Angeles. She came to California and got married, raised a family in South Los Angeles, where she had seven children, and a longtime husband. Ms. Parent worked at Martin Luther King Elementary on the corner of Western and Martin Luther King Boulevard for 44 years. Fully, two whole generations of young people were able to receive her guidance and the benefit of her work in our community. She was a member of Saint Bridget Catholic Church for over 60 years, and very, very active there. And she leaves behind six children and 11 grandchildren. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Harris-Dawson. Any other adjourned motions? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.